Are you masked?
No.
Okay, good. Hey. Hi. Okay, great.
Yep.
All right, I show five thirty, where there must actually be. Five thirty, not six thirty. I call the West Farland Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes, and I understand that there's a correction. I'm not counting.
Yeah, with respect to the public hearing for A twenty-one dash twenty conditional use permit for an off-premise sign, the minutes reflect that the motion that I made was to approve, and Atlanta seconded that motion, and it was actually the reverse, it was to deny. And then I noticed that, and under the adjournment as well, Commissioner Rackow moved, is missing, it appears, and Commissioner Thorsted seconded to adjourn. So with those two corrections, I would recommend, I would move to approve.
Second.
That wasn't yours.
I'll second it.
All right, in the second, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, same sign. Motion carries. All right, next item on the agenda is a public hearing, A twenty-one dash thirty-nine, where we've been at the adjourned eight condition, this is a replat from two thousand and thirteen. Tim, if you could do this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. These happen from time to time, little lot line issues. The applicant has prepared a preliminary plat to be reviewed. The only comment we've had on this is that engineering wants to ensure that any utility connections are addressed with replat, and so we recommend that as a condition of approval. Other than that, no issues to report.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so we're open to public comment. Any permission to speak on this matter? Any public comments? One more time, any public comments? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing, move to commissioners, comments, questions?
Move to approve, is presented with five recommendations from the staff report.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Same sign, close. Motion carries. Item number four, public hearing, A twenty-one dash forty, rezoning from R one, this is one and two family dwellings to commercial, light commercial conditional use permit, or evidence above commercial establishment. Tim, one more question.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. This property has been house of a dental office for a number of years, and is zoned currently R one, one and two family dwelling units. A medical and dental clinic is considered a conditional use within R one district, so it was, it was operating as a conditional use in that property. The dental office has since moved out, and the property has been for sale, for lease, for a short time here. The proposed new property owner is looking to create a commercial business within it, and have apartments above that commercial business to live in, and so that is, would require a rezoning to commercial, a light commercial district to allow for that, and within the light commercial district to have apartments above a commercial establishment is a conditional use permit. So the best approach for them was to seek a rezoning to light commercial. We're going through that process, and along with that, a conditional use permit that would be assigned to the property in perpetuity, so that apartment above that would be considered permitted by right, they'd be able to get financing for that property as well. We notified property owners within three hundred and fifty feet, as we would for a conditional use permit in applicable agencies and departments. We received one call asking for more information, and an email which is attached to the staff report in support of the request. As it pertains to the criteria we consider for granting a conditional use permit, no concerns were noted. The property, as you can see, is existed here for a number of years, and appears to fit well within the neighborhood, so any concerns, I think that are not a major concern for staff. Of course, public hearing may speak otherwise. As you see here on the zoning map, it is adjacent to commercial, to the north, and kitty corner, so it's not necessarily something you consider spot zoning. However, I do think we've looked at this in the past, where we'd like to find opportunities for neighborhood commercial. This is a great example of what that could be, so I just want to keep that in mind if we look at that in the future. But as it pertains to today, staff has no concerns rezoning this to commercial. I think, I just want to make sure that Planning Commission is aware, and will make sure to notify the City Commission, that although they want to use it for this particular use today, any use within the commercial district would be permitted by right. So it's just something to have in the back of your mind, that although what they want to do today is okay with the neighborhood, that if they sell that someday, that another commercial user would be able to come in and utilize that site someday in the future. So with that, I'm available for any questions, it is a public hearing, and I believe the applicant is here as well, that may be able to speak to anything as well, so. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Tim. So as noted, this is a public hearing. So open the public hearing, and see if there's any comments from the public. All right.
Come on, come to the mic. I'm the next door neighbor. I was wondering what a body art studio is, what their business hours is, and how you plan on having parking. Is there going to be a bunch of cars there? Because parking's already limited on that street, and what hours are they going to be there parked? And like he said, if it goes in the future, where that commercial zoning is for the future, how are we going to add parking there? We already destroyed that alley with that apartment, and threw in a bunch of P rock and called it good. Where are all the cars going to go if it's commercial?
What was your name?
Austin Montgomery.
As with any other development, Ms. Chair, just sorry, I don't want to answer every question that comes up, but just to kind of respond to that, with any development that happens, we would require their permit review, would go through any parking requirements. The alleyway, I can't speak to what the traffic may do to that alleyway, if it would use it at all, I'm not sure, but any, anything that they may do here would require they meet the parking requirement. So they've not issued, they've not asked for a change of use permit, which is something that they would have to get when they come in to rehab this building. When they do that, we would require that they have off-street parking available for the amount of square footage that they have for that commercial use and the residential use.
So would that on-street parking be in first, or in front of my house?
It's, to answer the question from the crowd, he asked if the on-street parking would be in front of his house or on their street, it's off-street parking that would be required. So any on-street parking that occurs there, we can't control if they're parking there as a resident or a commercial person, they would have to have available off-street parking. So that could include inside the garage, in front of the garage, this apron, so long as they're not impeding the sidewalk. And just as a matter of order, I'd just ask any member of the public, come to the mic, state your name, so that Planning Commission can speak to your request.
Should we speak to that?
Yeah, please.
So we're the potential buyers, Jennifer Mastard and Nathan Mastard. The hours would be ten to six, in order to refer to the question, Monday through Saturday, it is by appointment only, so the maximum number of people that would be working in the facility is five, so one person per artist, so ten people in their maximum with services, so that's very similar to what a dental agency would be providing as well, except Saturdays.
Still in the public hearing, any other public comments? Any other public comments? Okay, I think we'll close the public hearing.
Wait, body art, you're just, it's tattoos piercing?
Correct.
Can you elaborate, Tim, just a little bit on the neighborhood commercial, you know, the potential for the creation of that type of district, and what the differences between a neighborhood commercial and a commercial district would be, or light commercial district would be?
Yeah, and we kind of started this process, but didn't finish it, COVID hit, and we never continued it, but the neighborhood commercial idea was to talk a little bit more about form as opposed to use, and form requiring like lower amount of story height, trying to mimic like what a residential neighborhood's form would be, the style of buildings, the setbacks, because in a commercial district, there's no setbacks, you can, you ride up to the property line. So this is essentially, you know, developed like a house, and, and there's commercial uses within it, that's sort of the idea that we had behind that.
Tim, was this a PUD for all these years?
No.
What was the zoning model that they messed up?
It was R one residential zoning, but we allow clinics and medical offices as a conditionally permitted use within the R one district, so actually the Sanford Hospital, the old one, on Cheyenne and Thirteenth, was also an R one zone property, so. It's just the, the commercial use, and a tattoo parlor, body art studio, that would fall under commercial uses, and that's why the applicant is having to pursue this. So, you know, if they walk in the door, and we look at the site, and they have more square footage than the parking would accommodate, they'd have to find parking somewhere, and that might mean renting parking stalls from the fire department, or looking at a shared parking agreement. I'm not sure what that would look like, we haven't gone that deep into it yet to determine whether or not they're going to need to find more, some more parking, or it would, the other option is, the City Commission can review a reduction in parking as a resolution, it doesn't require anything other than the City Commission approving that, and they can approve it through justified reduction, like if they say we don't, like, they say exactly how many spaces they need, and they can do that, or they can come up with other creative strategies for that, so that might be another, another hill they have to climb down the road.
Now, right across the street from this is the church.
Yep, Kitty Corner.
Kitty Corner.
Yep, so if they could use some of those spaces, or up the street is the fire department's, I don't know how many extra spaces they may have, you know, just, there's some options, I think, around the area if parking becomes a problem, and I, I've not heard a problem before, so I'm, this is why we send out notices, so the public can come out and, and tell us if there's problems, and we can talk through those, so if the Planning Commission wants to, you know, talk a little bit more with the person who came out here, I certainly encourage that.
Austin, where, from your place, where does that add from, from there?
I'm actually right next door, across.
Around the corner?
Nope, right next door, we have a fence separating us. And I do have one more question, what, if it's light commercial, are the rules for signage? Like, I'm not necessarily against you guys at all, but I bought that house, and when it was appraised, I got a bad appraisal because I'm close to a church and a fire department. So what is the light commercial rules for signage? Can somebody, you know, after them, come in, put a big gaudy sign that's going to make this?
No. Uh, yes, they can put a sign up, under light commercial district standards.
But not a big.
Well, their, their allotment would be limited because the width of the lot is pretty narrow, so again, we're kind of talking about specifics on permitting, so I'm just going to guess that lot's fifty feet wide. So a fifty-foot wide lot would be allotted one hundred square feet available of signage. They could not, on a wall sign, they can't exceed ten percent of the facade of the wall, so it makes for a pretty, it won't be a, they couldn't put a hundred and, hundred-square-foot sign on, on the side of the building, it wouldn't, it wouldn't fit, it wouldn't, it'd be over that ten percent. But that's, again, like, kind of getting into the weeds of what could, what could happen there, and I understand, like, if you're looking at a rezoning, that we should consider all of those things, it's just not something that we've addressed at this time, so I can't answer with specifics right now, and I apologize for that. I can certainly dig into it.
Yeah, Shane, I'm straight to the west, we share a fence.
Just to clarify a couple things, you know, the sign, size that you mentioned, the on-premise signs, off-premise signs?
Yeah, off-premise signs would not be allowed, just an on-premise sign to advertise their business, so. Yeah, and I guess I would just caution that the conditional use permit you're considering is for the apartments above the commercial, we're looking at a rezoning to commercial, and we, we don't have something like a conditional overlay that can add separate little restrictions on this. The only other option they'd have to do is a PUD, and I, I could, I could understand the justification for a PUD absent a neighborhood zoning district, that's really the only thing that makes this site unique, so we hate to throw those restrictions on, just kind of willy-nilly, because one person doesn't like this or that, we'd rather go a PUD direction. Again, I think what we're, what we're providing to the Planning Commission is that this is nearby other commercials, so it's not necessarily something you consider spot zoning. The lot, I'd say, is small enough that some of those concerns over large commercial operations probably aren't there, large signs with a fifty-foot wide lot likely are not to occur. Parking will be addressed at time of permitting, they're required to have a certain number of off-street parking spaces, or they don't get a permit, and they will have to get a change of use permit from going from a dental clinic to a tattoo parlor, or a body art studio, so there are a level of protections that the city ordinances have to prevent nuisance factors from happening, so, and talking about noise, so if there's a commercial operation here that has noise, that noise can exceed a certain decibel level on the most adjacent residential property, so if the neighbor here happens to have a noise complaint, we'll measure that decibel level on their property, not on the commercial property, so that commercial can't extend into that residential, if that makes any sense.
Maybe just talk a little bit about that change of use permit process, who does that go to?
Yeah, so a change of use permit is received by our building inspector, the plan review is done by planning, engineering, fire, police, public works, sanitation, so all of our major departments review that, and they have to sign off on that permit before it's issued.
Just like to make the comment that I, on principle, I'm concerned about that kind of, even though you were saying it's really not spot rezoning, we could claim that there's commercial nearby, but it is, to me, spot zoning, and I'm, on principle, leery of going from residential to commercial in that kind of a situation, given that there are options within the R one zoning ordinance, there, there was a clinic there, dental clinic, so there are things, I don't know, apparently there was trouble selling it, or something that might have led to the, the interest in a commercial rezone. It, it also leads me to think about what are our neighborhood plans for a neighborhood like this? Where do we see this going? Because I can see by accretion that over time, neighborhoods become something that we might not have wanted them to become, or that the residents in that neighborhood didn't want them to become. Nothing about the particular commercial interest here, but as more and more commercial enterprises might move in, where there are houses up for sale, or whatever, it, it just seems that we need to do more proactive thinking about neighborhoods, and where we would like them to go, what kinds of businesses might be attracted to them, that people in the neighborhood might really want. I'm just leery about this proposal.
Ms. Chair, if I could, just one quick thing I want to point out, spot zoning is something, I want to be careful we know what that means before we say that we're doing it.
Yes, correct.
So, yeah, John, I don't know if you want to touch on spot zoning, because it's important that as a Planning Commission, we understand what that means, so I apologize, but. Do you mind? Sorry.
Yeah, no problem.
Throw you right on it, but.
Thank you, Tim, so typically, spot zoning is a legal determination, and some people throw around the term spot zoning all the time, but it doesn't necessarily mean that it's spot zoning. Spot zoning is typically the postage stamp, like, the, the only cases that have actually found spot zoning is if you had a little postage stamp of a, like, a industrial development, a little spot right in the center of a residential neighborhood. Factors that take you away from spot zoning is, is there the similar use, or a next step of the use, like, you go from multi-family to light commercial, is that neighboring the property? It truly has to be an island, and to be quite frank, there's not many court cases where they've actually found spot zoning, is it, it really has to be the postage stamp in a sea of a different use, and.
Thank you, John, I, I wanted to make sure to make that clarification, but your, your neighborhood comments certainly are good comments to have, and that's sort of why having that neighborhood commercial discussion is important. We have not established that zoning district, but I, I think it's an important next step. As our community wants to grow, we were kind of developed as a suburban community, and what we found in our comp plan is that people are leaving their suburban neighborhood to drive to get their services, whether it's, you know, body art, or dentist, or going to a restaurant, or getting your groceries, and we found that that's really a negative aspect of the community, when people have to get out of their house, get it in the car, drive to an arterial roadway to get to where their services are needed. So that's where that neighborhood commercial idea sprouted from, is that we need to keep people in their neighborhoods, we want people to avoid having to leave town to get the services that they want, whether, whatever that service may be, it was kind of a big part of our discussion, so that's why the neighborhood commercial became a thing, and we just haven't made our way to finishing that up, and, and this, to my eye, is a really great example of neighborhood commercial, because it fits within the neighborhood very well, it has for, I think, forty more years as a dental clinic, and it just so happens that within our R one district, we very specifically call out medical and dental clinics, and we probably should expand upon that and add some conditions for form, because I think so long as our nuisance ordinances are in place, and we can handle form, that something like this is actually a positive for the neighborhood, because you can actually have things generating in your neighborhood, you can go get this service in your neighborhood, you don't have to drive to downtown, or to another area of town to get this service, whether it's a chiropractor, or a dentist, or what have you. We don't tend to get into use in, in that form of zoning, it's more about what's that form, and how do we control any potential nuisance factors?
Ms. Chair, you know, I moved to West Far when I was like three, and I hate to say it, it's fifty-eight, fifty-nine years ago, and this was a dental clinic back then, and there was an apartment there then. What, what's different now, is it because they're changing to a different use?
A use, yeah, just the use.
My guess is it's going to be similar parking issues, you know, with the employees of four or five, you know, a couple dental assistants, hygienist, office manager, and then, you know, you got two pages in the waiting room, or two chairs, and I think we're looking at fairly similar load factors on the neighborhood. It looks like there's at least four parking spots right in the driveway, is that, am I seeing that right? You know, in front of the garages there. And I just don't ever remember seeing a lot of cars parked, you know, everywhere during that, driven by that two million times.
I'm curious, being that a light commercial would be abutted up against the residential, can you refresh us on what, if any, protections there are for the adjacent residential? You know, are there, is there screening requirements? You, you talked a little bit about the noise requirements, but with that adjacent use, what, what comes into play with our existing zoning?
Thank you, this is opening up a whole bunch of can of worms. But I'm glad to have these conversations, I apologize for the length of time on it to the applicants and other applicants. It's, as long as they're not changing the building right now, they don't need to add the buffer, but if they do tear down the building, or if the building burns down someday, they will have to have a buffer in here, between the commercial to the residential. Essentially, it'll create a requirement for them to have a fence and a buffer yard, sorry, I'm going to get to it, and it makes it a little difficult to develop, it makes it a little difficult to build a new building on the site, but they would have to do it, or come in for some sort of a variance, which would require public hearing and, and neighborhood comment. They could have a fifteen-foot buffer yard, I believe, excuse me, I'm going to double check, twenty-five-foot buffer yard and a fence, so they'd, they'd have to, if they, if that building burned down, or they wanted to tear it down to build a new building, they'd have to create that twenty-five-foot buffer yard and six-foot screen between them and the residential property to the west.
Yeah.
It'd be a lot, so they'd have to come in either for a variance, or try to purchase that property and rebuild together, so really, the, the building as it sits today is going to have to stay that way, and, you know, if, if they want to rebuild someday and actually create a new commercial lot, it would be a complicated lot to build on, so it, it would sit as it is today, really, for perpetuity, at least in its current development state.
With the hope that we develop that residential neighborhood commercial zone.
By then, hopefully, we create that zoning district, or, you know, they look at a larger redevelopment project, so.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, what's your wishes?
I, I think it is, I would move to approve it, I think it's just, it's a interesting situation that's created, you know, by the exemption under the existing residential, and this is, as the best tool in our toolbox today to allow that property to continue to have a beneficial use within the community, so I would move to approve with the conditions noted by staff.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, moving on to our agenda number five, public hearing, A twenty-one dash forty-one, this is a conditional use permit for an oversized accessory building at twenty-one six, I'm sorry, twenty sixteen Anne Street, in the Woodland Estate subdivision, Malachi.
Just going to come back here to the agenda here. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Commission chair, Commissioners, the applicant has submitted an application for a conditional use permit for the purpose of building a two thousand eight hundred and forty-three square foot oversized building for personal storage in a rural estate zone district, which is located in the cities. which is located in the city's extraterritorial area, which is about one and a half miles to the north of West Fargo city limits. The R-1E Rural Estate Zoning District allows for accessory structures greater than 1,000 square feet as a conditional use, provided they are in character with the development pattern of the subdivision they are in. The applicant has provided a site plan which shows the new accessory structure will be built in the rear yard. There is a hundred-foot required riverbank control setback, which is the proposed building appears to meet. Accessory structures over 1,000 square feet have been conditionally approved in the past. It looks like the applicant has submitted elevations with his application which shows the exterior finish would be similar to the primary residence. In the past, conditional use permits were approved in this area for 2,160 square feet and 2,400 square feet. In recent years, there have been two 2,400-square-foot accessory buildings approved in the Selberg subdivision, which is a half-mile north of the development. A conditional use permit agreement is required to be signed prior to issuance of a building permit and may include conditions as approved by the commission. The area is within a special flood hazard area. According to the flood hazard layer firm, the majority of the property the applicant intends to build on is located in the AE designated zone, and has a base flood elevation of about 899.2 feet. City of West Fargo Floodplain Development Regulations will require the applicant to construct any proposed buildings at two and a half feet above base flood elevation. Any development will be required to meet all applicable state, federal, and local regulations, which may have changed since the existing home was constructed. Property owners within 350 square feet and applicable agencies and departments, including Reed Township officials, Cass County Planning, and the Cass County Sanitarium were notified. We did receive a notification from Fargo-Cass Public Health that they reviewed the property, and they determined that the proposed building would not impact the home septic system. We did receive a comment from Matthew Kirkwood, a protest letter after the packet was sent out, and that should have all been sent to you via email. If you did not receive that, I also have printouts here in case you need it. Most of his concerns related to current traffic in the neighborhood, some people who have been parking on the street in the neighborhood as well, as some in-home occupations within the neighborhood as well. Consistency with the comprehensive plan and other applicable city plans and ordinances. This area is located within the suburban restricted growth sector, which includes areas between the current and proposed diversion that may have new development potential should the new diversion be built. The G1 area identifies significant tracts of land that are currently rural, but where directed and well-planned new development could occur around the identified potential future mixed-use and employment centers. The application is providing an accessory to an existing use, and therefore, the application may be considered consistent with the comprehensive plan. It is staff's recommendation that the city approve the proposed application on the basis that is consistent with city plans and ordinances, with recommended conditions of approval as follows. One, that the accessory building is constructed of the same color and materials as the primary residential structure. Two, a signed conditional use permit agreement is received. Three, any building permits should follow the preliminary flood map, which will require a percent allowable fill on any development. And four, the applicant is to meet all federal, state, and local requirements for improvements to the site and structures. This is a public hearing, and I believe the applicant is here tonight, as well as a couple other folks from the neighborhood.
Thank you, Malachi. Okay, as noted, this is a public hearing, so we'll open that and invite anybody that wants to make public comments.
Well, I'd like to speak, I was hoping they'd go last just to hear the arguments. My name's Matthew Kirkwood, as noted. It wasn't noted by Malachi there, I was concerned about the character. It is a residential neighborhood. The conditional use allows for a thousand-square-foot building. When I was sent the plans and everything else, it was ineligible. I couldn't read this, ineligible. And so I went to the builder, and he said, "Oh, yeah, that's for the siding company, isn't it?" I said, "No, it's for a residential property." And again, that's hearsay at this point, but they thought it was for a commercial building. And so it's allowed for 1,000 square feet. I don't mind my neighbors building accessory buildings, but this is now three times the size of what's really allowed. And it's gone to the point that, like, this is ridiculous, and the plan that was shown, by the way, is out of scale. It's shown much smaller than what it will be. So, one, I wanted to let you know that the plan was inaccurate. The other was the dimensions on here says 2,600. Now it's 2,800. This is the plan at 2,600, if I can show everybody, the red area, that's what is allowed, 1,000 square feet. Everything I've hatched is in excess to that. Does that make sense? And so the character is going to change the neighborhood. I mean, one reason my wife and kids moved there is because I thought it was a nice, friendly neighborhood. And now it's turning into a commercial industrial park, and I'm against that. So I just want to speak to that. The other is the road is private, it's a private road. The city, the county doesn't maintain it. In fact, Malachi, can you show the other pictures that came with the application? Because it's funny, Google Earth map, and I've complained about this. It's this image right here. He has three of those trailers parked there, commercial trailers parked on this Google map. And so it says it's for residential, but it's commercial. I don't, I can't point to that, but you see at the lower end of that, you see the two trailers? And so the size of this building would hold over twenty trailers the size of this across the street here, twenty of those inside of those. I know he has an RV, has a really nice home, really nice RV. I, you know, I like to keep things nice. I don't mind him storing an RV in there, but this is well beyond the excess of 1,000 square feet. Again, I'm also an architect and a planner, by the way. And a lot of times, you know, when I build stuff, design stuff, it's about 1,000 square feet. You know, this was thirty-two by thirty-two, which is 1,000 square feet. Well, this is a little bit over. Sometimes you can't get across thirty-two feet, so we go thirty-four feet. This is, if you guys saw, it's over seventy feet in length, well beyond the character of the neighborhood. So that's all I have to say at this point. Thank you for your time, and I can, you know, if there's any additional questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Matthew, thank you. Okay, we're still in public hearing, other public comments.
My name is, excuse me, Gene Doling, I'm the other neighbor. My property borders Mr. Kenoki's property, which is where the shed would be built, and I have no objection to the, what he has planned here. Just, I guess, in response to a couple of Mr. Kirkwood's comments, he's got a number of accessory buildings built in his backyard, or if you want to call them structures, cages, whatever. He's got a large bird operation back there. He referred to-
Wait, wait, I'm sorry, this isn't about me, right?
Well, I'm just explaining-
Okay, thank you.
-the neighborhood perspective.
I appreciate it, thank you.
I'm sure you do. So anyway, my point is, is that Mr. Kirkwood comes in here and objects, claims there used to be a friendly neighborhood, affects the value of the bill, or the, this proposed shed affecting the value of the neighborhood. Quite frankly, I don't see that as a concern. There are a number of these large buildings also in the community. I think personally that it could, and we are also potentially interested in building one in the future. I think it's a possible increase in value to our property. So I think that that is, that objection really doesn't have a whole lot of basis to it. He hasn't brought any appraisals in, or appraisers, or expert testimony to substantiate that. So I guess my position is, I'm the one that lives next to Mr. Kenoki. We have no objection to this proposal.
Thank you, sir. Okay, still in public hearing, any other public comments? Other public comments, one more, Kate?
My name is Keith Kenoki. So this is my proposed garage. I do own a business, and I do own a siding business in town. I do have two off-site shops that we use, so this is for personal use only, so. Yeah, that's all I have, so, thank you.
Okay, well, last call, any other public comments? All right, hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Malachi, do you have something? Just here for-
Just here in case.
Commissioners.
So on some of the previous applications, we've seen, like, this height has been an issue, that that's not a concern here at all?
Correct. So he would have to stay with one story is approximately how high or tall the building could be made to be.
Sorry, how tall is it? This is a seven-to-twelve pitch, it was about thirty feet to scale.
Twenty feet at midpoint, Tim.
Okay, so, yeah.
If you like, this is the scale, the eight-inch scale, and that door is fifteen feet, so that's thirty feet tall.
The door's not fifteen feet.
Oh, it says on the plan here that you have-
All right, let's have some order here, please.
The R1E district requires twenty feet maximum height at midpoint. That's from Eve to the peak. We measure midpoint there, and that will be required at time of permitting.
Thank you.
So, yeah, it'll, at the time of permitting, the maximum that could be allowed is the twenty-foot height. Thank you.
Mike.
Malachi, within this residential area, are there other structures similar to this? Accessory buildings? And as far as size, I guess, the concern is, it seems like the requests we've been getting lately have been getting bigger and bigger and bigger, the sizes of the buildings, not only in this area, but on the south side. I know we had some pretty large requests as well. I guess, is there a limiting factor on that, or is it just whatever number we decide we were comfortable with?
So to answer your first question, there are a couple of other oversized accessory buildings within the same subdivision. They're just smaller than what's being proposed. So those two sizes were 2,160 square feet and 2,400 square feet. As to your question on the maximum size, there is no maximum size. Basically, it's left open-ended so that both the Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as the neighborhood, can sort of set that precedent for what is considered to be in-character with that neighborhood and what that neighborhood finds acceptable.
Okay, and just one follow-up question. I think it's been touched on, but it seems like the concern was is that a commercial operation is going to be done out of this property. As far as our decision process here, that doesn't enter into it because we don't know what it's going to be used for. I don't think we consider that, whether it is or isn't. It's, that's a control of a different function of government or somewhere. So I guess I just want to make that point, is we, we're not going to turn this down just because if the guy is using it as a commercial, he's not supposed to be. Someone else has to enforce the rules regarding that because our intention, if we move with anything, is that it's for personal, personal use.
Correct, so home occupations still fall under, I guess, planning and zoning's purview. As far as in relation to this particular application, this application, as you said, is just for a conditional use permit to build an oversized accessory structure. You know, the applicant says he's using it for personal storage. You know, if, for some reason, you know, a code within the planning and zoning ordinance was being, I guess, violated or broken, you know, we could receive a complaint, and then we could have potentially our code enforcement officer look into that zoning violation.
Thank you.
I think there were, there was something mentioned about complaints that had been filed in that neighborhood. Has anyone looked into any of this? Is there a pattern in this neighborhood? Are we contributing to a pattern here where there is a growth of businesses occurring in these big buildings that I am on record opposing the conditional use of, and building of these? Do we know anything about the concerns that were raised in that complaint?
So prior to this application, I have never personally, I guess, received any complaints through this neighborhood. I did have a conversation with Mr. Kirkwood where he brought up some of the complaints that were in that letter that I sent out to you. I did speak to our code enforcement officer, and he hadn't received any complaints prior to this application being brought up either. So as far as prior complaints, I guess, I've never received any, and Travis in code enforcement hasn't ever received any prior to this application.
But there is a process, if indeed we were to approve this, and it turned out there was commercial use going on with this, there is a process for someone to file a complaint with code enforcement, which would be Travis at this point. And then what happens? They have to cease that commercial activity in that building, I'm assuming?
John.
I've actually enforced this before, so typically, what would happen is if there's a verified complaint, we send a notice first to give the property owner opportunity to cease and desist the activity. If they fail to comply, then we have two options. We would either prosecute them in municipal court, or go the civil route to get them to end their businesses. I've used both, we used the civil route to discontinue a business that was operating out of a home that violated the home occupation laws. I also wanted to note, just sort of clear up, neither here, I'm not in favor or against the conditional use permit, but it's important that when you evaluate a conditional use permit, conditional use permit review by a planning and zoning commission is different than a pure zoning action. You need to take the facts and circumstances that are related to the application and apply them to the ordinance. So you have to look at, do they meet the requirements under the ordinance to grant the conditional use permit? One of the conditions is, is it similar in structure to the community? That's a factor. Things like, can they operate a business out of there are not part of that analysis. And so you look at, does it meet the threshold under a conditional use permit? And then you make your recommendation. The reason the law distinguishes conditional use permits from regular zoning actions is as a conditional use permit, you sit as an administrative tribunal almost. You make a, just like a judge, you make a decision based upon the facts presented to you, and you apply the ordinance. It's not the same as when you're creating an ordinance, which is more of a legislative decision, in which you have more discretion. So I just want to take the opportunity that you really should just be looking at, what does the ordinance say and the facts here?
Thank you, John.
This is another one of those situations where, you know, this was done by Reed Township before West Fargo. Next, and so, you know, they would allow as big a building as you wanted to build out there at that time, as April Wells knows, where she lives.
Lived just to the north, yep.
And so, you know, these are things, these are issues that the city inherits. And, you know, me serving a township, I'm trying to prevent, after watching this year after year after year. So this is just sort of an issue that we inherit. But, like the attorney says, we have to evaluate this like we've evaluated all the others. And if it's consistent with what we've done in the past, it's hard to turn it down. I mean, and there's no upper limit to these things. You know, what happens is the next one comes in with a, you know, a 5,000-square-foot building. I mean, what, how do we handle that? If they have the property that will handle that, how do we turn it down? And should we turn it down? I mean, that's, that's what we're here for. These are rural properties with extra acres, and that's why they're attractive, so people can put these larger buildings out there for all their junk. Not that your stuff is junk, you know, mine is, that's what I'm saying. And so, I mean, I, you know, again, this is an inherited issue that, that, you know, I think, I mean, I want to follow the attorney's advice, if I can, I mean.
Well, but don't-
I got a follow-up question to you. When it comes to using a property out of zone, so if it was, did become a commercial property, is it the city then that is required to simply, or go after the guy? Or is it up to the neighborhood?
Well, really, there's two options. The city can pursue it if it rises to a public nuisance, or to a nuisance. The neighbors could also bring suit. So usually, the city takes action. I have seen very few actions where neighborhoods join together. It's not unheard of, though, in the community. We've seen a couple neighborhood actions against properties that they want to bring suit. But normally, it would be the city, we get, we take seriously every complaint that comes forward. We investigate it, we give them the opportunity to correct it, and- even we had a couple of people that have wanted to appeal the decision to the city commission under a code enforcement, and the city commission has enforced the ordinances. I can think of the last one was a gentleman trying to park his, uh, four-wheel drive vehicle on an unapproved surface in his backyard, so.
Mr. Chair, if I could add a little light to this discussion, too. This is an interesting distinction. Chapter four is applicable in our extraterritorial jurisdiction, our planning and zoning regulations. Whereas nuisance things, parking, where Mr. Kirkwood pointed out that the parking is an issue, and the Cass County Sheriff is involved, we don't have any jurisdiction over parking. It's not our street. We do have jurisdiction over planning and zoning issues, subdivision, floodplain development. And the use of a property for home occupations is within chapter four, and we've used that to regulate within town really well. I'm pretty happy with our provisions for that. So, if he has such things as customers coming to the site, or employees that aren't part of the family that want to work on the site. So, if Mr. Noki wanted to come in and say, "I want to work my siding business out of this oper, out of this building," it would be a conditionally permitted use for this body to consider. And we'd be in the same position, because it is within planning and zoning ordinances, so. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other thoughts?
It'd just be nice if we had some better guidelines, percentage, that they can go over these basic things. I know it exists, but.
If you recall, McManus Estates, for instance, we've not gone, I think, over two thousand square feet within that neighborhood, because every time we do a conditionally used permit, and somebody wants to go larger than that, that neighborhood shows up, and they push against that. Nelson Acres, for instance, they have buildings as large as, I think, forty, five hundred, five thousand square feet, so. There are some neighborhoods where large lots, where you can kind of tuck that larger building behind. It's not been an issue, and that's why it's one of those few areas of discretion. And as John states, a conditionally used permit is quasi-judicial, judicial. You need to rely on the facts. And in this case, the facts and what Mr. Kirkwood or any other resident should represent to us is, what is it that is an issue with this? Is it too large? Okay, why is it too large? Is the siding type different from the residential character of the neighborhood? So, when Mr. Kirkwood first came up and talked about character, those are the things that I think the planning commission should discern and, and deliberate on, not necessarily what type of things they might do in the building. That's not for us to consider right now.
Do we know what the size of the primary structure is on the property? I, I always like to look at kind of the ratio of, you know, is, is the accessory structure truly an accessory to the primary use?
I do not know that off the top of my head. I could probably look it up on GIS here and do a quick.
You won't be able to, because it's not within city limits.
Do you want to list our original house?
Yeah.
Uh, without the garage, without the garage, it's, uh, rated on five thousand five hundred. It's a little bit raw.
Thank you.
I know we're out of public hearing, but Mr. Kirkwood, it sounded like you've got one comment to make.
You know, I'm not argumentative. I just, is there any way we can accurate floor plans? Because this, the site plan is out of proportion, out of scale. I, I, again, I'm a planner and ideal in scale. I like to scale the ones. But even this one from the builder, uh, only shows two thousand six hundred square feet. Now he's taking two thousand eight hundred square feet. It's already four feet from the property line, I believe, proposed.
Five, I believe.
Okay, yeah, the E, he has three feet, uh, because the dimensions are off on that. So, physically, he can't fit that building in that spot.
So, Malakai, can you comment about setback? And what are the, if, if this group, just for discussion's sake, would approve the conditional use permit, what are the next steps to go ahead and get the final approvals for the building?
So, the applicant could take out a building permit, then. He would first need to, I believe, get a, well, no, he already has a sanitation permit. That's only for a single-family home, but it, he would have to take out a building permit. That would go to the building inspections department. They would inspect it for, uh, all, you know, construction materials, um, things like that. Usually, buildings inspections then sends me the application, and then I look at it as far as setbacks go. And so, in, in this scenario, you know, so the minimum setback, I believe, is five feet?
Um, setback for accessory structure would be three feet for the side yard.
And so, in that building permit process, you would confirm the?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, ten feet. Sorry, Mr. Chair.
Okay, ten feet setbacks on the side yards, plus you'd confirm the elevation of the midpoint of the roof, all those other criteria?
Yeah.
That it meets the flood zone elevation on the, yeah, all of those things.
I have a comment about why we then have a one thousand square foot figure at all. That is the fact. If we're being held to the facts here, the fact is that that is the zoning ordinance, and that a conditional use is a request to us to change or to somehow go beyond what that zoning ordinance is. And should we not have to be persuaded that there's some reason to go beyond that thousand square feet other than saying, "Well, since it's got the, the color and, uh, whatever, that it looks okay," that any size building fits, then? I, I'm just puzzled about this whole, what is the fact here? The fact is a thousand square feet, and we're being asked to approve something through a conditional use application, which requires us to use our judgment, which goes beyond a fact, correct?
John, I want to.
And what is, what are we judging it on, besides that the color's good, the shape is good? I, I'm really confused why we have to deal with this every time. I'm against this accretion of larger and larger buildings. Either we get rid of the thousand square feet and just say, "You get the right color and shape, we'll approve it," or there's some reason we have a thousand square feet in that ordinance.
So, I believe the majority of other zoning districts, residential districts, it's a thousand square feet, and that's the maximum that you can go up to, um, in town and out of town. Um, it's only with the larger sort of lots, so.
Okay, if I can touch on this real quick.
Sure.
Um, so, we have two zoning districts that allow larger than, uh, would be approved. One thousand square feet is the max size in residential zoning district. We have two that allow it. R one E Rural Estate District and RR Rural Residential. Very specifically, it states that it is a conditionally permitted use. In the R one E, it's accessory buildings greater than one thousand square feet, provided they are in character with the development patterns of the subdivision. So, that is the only discretion that they provide in there. And that's why we, what John had spoken about, and I'll let John expand upon that. So, that's the guidance you're given through our ordinance, and that's why you're in these positions to, to respond to this permitted request. John, thanks.
Right, and, and the follow-up, and it's that a conditional use that is permitted by staff ordinance, and you ask, "Why are we along this?" The ordinance allows people by right to apply for a conditional use permit. It's not up to the planning and zoning commission, it's not up to the city commission, whether somebody comes to the city or not with an application. That is the applicant's choice to approach the city for a request for, for a conditional use. When you receive a conditional use, you have to evaluate what's in the ordinance, and whether or not what's in the ordinance applies to their request. Our only discretion in the ordinance is whether or not, uh, the building is consistent with the character of the community. So, you could look at, is it, you know, how does it compare to the size of the house? That's, that's a great example. Is the siding, is the siding consistent with residential use? Or does it have, you know, like, one of those old tin buildings that you see on a turkey farm? That's probably not consistent with that. Is it got the, you know, a normal structure that you would see with the garage, with the normal type of roof? Or is it some type of flat roof or industrial roof? Those are the items that you look at when you consider a conditional use permit. That's what's set out in the ordinance for the planning and zoning commission to review and make a recommendation about. And any applicant with a conditional use permit, they have a right under law, if they're not ultimately satisfied with the decision of the city, to appeal that to a district court. The district court looks only at, did the city properly apply the ordinance to the facts? So, there's very, because you're acting in an administrative judicial capacity, your decision-making discretion is limited to what's in the ordinance. It's not the same as when we pass a zoning ordinance. And so, my response would be, if there's a concern about larger buildings and making these conditional use permits, that's a zoning discussion or ordinance change that should be discussed at a, a different city council, at a different planning and zoning meeting. That does not, it doesn't impact this discussion tonight, because you have a pending application before you that you have to apply the ordinance to the facts. So, it's just a, it's a different standard. It's policymaking versus applying the ordinance.
Thank you. I'm not sure I agree with your interpretation of all that, because the ordinance actually says "character of the neighborhood." And what you've described are features of the building, but character is an interpretation. And that does require us to interpret based on what we're hearing from the neighborhood, what's in the proposal, et cetera. Does a huge building change the character of a neighborhood? Probably. So, that's my point about the interpretation, because the ordinance also says one thousand feet, square feet. And as far as I'm concerned, an application to go beyond that for conditional use permit requires us to, requires a rationale to do it beyond the quality of the building itself. So, that's just my position. I appreciate it, and you've clarified very well what the legal standing is on that.
Commissioners, other thoughts, comments, discussion? April, you had made a comment about the size, and then if I recall back when we've had some of these other applications before, and I don't recall in this neighborhood particularly, but down in some of the southern neighborhoods, we had a property owner that was requesting a, a accessory building that was, I don't know, larger than the primary building. And I think we asked them to go back and make it a little bit smaller, and that maybe came back when I was gone last month, but I, I don't recall seeing that back. But I guess, to me, that's probably our dilemma right now, is the, it appears that we've approved conditional use permits for, you know, a variety of accessory buildings in this neighborhood. Of course, the next, the next guy always wants a little bit bigger building. And so, that's, you know, maybe part of the dilemma here that we have is, um, you know, and, and the, the sort of judgment call that we might have is, we have a duty to consider this application in our judgment. Is the requested size appropriate? Or is there, um, some requests that we want to make otherwise, so?
So, on, on that point, um, you know, with the additional information that it is, you know, clearly less square footage than the primary structure, that helps to satisfy that, knowing that they will have to be in compliance with the building height. You know, the, I think the one we talked about previously had a second floor, and so, that upper floor was adding to the height, which was a little problematic to some of the neighbors. And I think this, the other thing that I kind of appreciate about what we're seeing here in front of us is the square footage, although it is a, you know, one massive structure, it also has the smaller attachment to it from the front elevation that gives it a different character, you know, that variation in the roof line. So, yeah, we are at a higher square footage here than we've previously approved in this neighborhood, but it's not, you know, monolithic, if you will. It's got that breakup between the smaller office or whatever that attachment to the front of the building is going to be. Game room, uh, attached to the, the larger building, and that, you know, seems like it's, it's more consistent with the photos I saw, um, in the neighborhood with the front of the buildings. I also live out there, just to the north, and I've been through this neighborhood, so the, you know, that's where I'm leaning towards looking at this and saying, it, it looks like he's done some things to try to fit in with the surrounding community that he is in.
Is there a motion in there somewhere?
I would move to approve, uh, based on that.
We have a motion.
Oh, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve with the conditions noted, assuming?
Yes, with the conditions noted by staff.
Okay. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed?
Aye.
Thank you.
I make one comment. I think it would really be helpful if planning staff would come up with parameters in the future. It's tough for us to make a judgment call, especially if we don't, we don't live in the area, we don't know the character. I think like, uh, Commissioner Walker pointed out, I think it's very pertinent information knowing the size of existing structures versus what you want to add, because that, that does affect the character of the property. So, I, any help you can provide us, some parameters, and so, I was just guessing whether three thousand or five thousand square foot's fine, as long as it, it resembles the neighborhood. I think we need a little more, at least I think, a little better guidelines as to, you know, things we should maybe consider in the future. And again, I understand that's, that's going to have to be something drawn into some kind of, uh, ordinance or, or other specifications, but I think that's a very good point. It's, it's really challenging to know what fits in what neighborhood, especially when you don't live there, so.
Yeah, and I struggled, because, you know, the, the ET goes through the middle of my house, of the country. It's a little further, you know, and I wanted to build a six thousand square foot hangar for my runway. Based on some of this stuff, nobody would let me, even though I'm out in the middle of nowhere, basically. And, and so, I, you know, I, I would resent West Fargo telling me that I can't, you know, operate my property. I purchased it, and so, that's, that's kind of why I struggle with this stuff. This stuff is initially a rural estate, and it's not in the city of West Fargo. They bought this property, used to pay the lease and stuff, and so, it's a, it's, it's, these are hard.
Okay, good discussion. Moving on, item number six, public hearing, item A twenty-one dash forty-two. This is the Gensler subdivision and conditional use permit for a non-farm, single-family residential dwelling. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, um, so once again, another item that's out in the ET area here. So, the property is located in the city's extraterritorial area, only this time it's about half a mile to the west of West Fargo city limits. The proposed use of a non-farm, single-family dwelling is considered a conditional use within the agricultural district, um, subject to the property being platted. Conditions for approval for lot sizes of less than forty acres is if the surrounding quarter, quarter section or legal law of record is deed restricted to prevent development, until the areas annexed and city services are extended to the area. The property that we're talking about tonight is about nine acres in size. The surrounding thirty-one acres of land would need to be deed restricted to prevent further development, um, should this application be approved. The city currently has no utilities in this area, nor does it provide any services. Current and future owners will need to provide utilities at this location, including but not limited to water and septic. A conditional use permit agreement is required to be signed prior to the issuance of a building permit, and may include conditions deemed appropriate by the commission. Public land dedication is required pursuant to four dash zero four zero seven of city ordinances. Given that the majority of the area proposed to, uh, to be developed is to remain undeveloped, staff offers for consideration the ability to defer the public land dedication or fee in lieu, to which time as when the property is either re-subdivided or is further developed upon. It would be staff's recommendation that this deferral be part of an agreement recorded against the subdivision. The area is within a special flood hazard area. According to the flood hazard layer firm, the majority of the property the applicant intends to build on is located in zone egg, uh, A, excuse me, and has an undefined base flood elevation. City of West Fargo floodplain development regulations would require the applicant to construct any proposed buildings at two and a half feet above base flood elevation. Any development be required to meet all applicable federal, state, and local regulations. A map is attached, along with preliminary flood map, uh, for your reference. Property owners within three hundred and fifty foot you, Mapleton Township officials, Cass County public, uh, or Cass County planning, Cass County engineer, and the Cass County sanitarian were all notified. We did receive a comment from the Cass County engineer, who conditionally approved an access permit for the property, provided that an access easement is added to the proposed plat. The applicant resubmitted, um, the application with a revised site plan and plat in relation to the request by the county engineer. in relation to the request by the county engineer. This area is within the deferred development sector. This sector includes spaces west of the proposed Fargo Moorhead area diversion project, as well as land located in the northern section of the extraterritorial areas. At the time of the approval of West Fargo 2.0, it had not been determined what effects the project might have upon properties along the diversion. And therefore, it was recommended that planning and development not take place in the sector until the diversion was operational and a revised floodplain map had been made available. If the city approves the proposed application, staff would recommend conditions of approval as follows. One, that a deferral of public land dedication or fee in lieu, effective at which time, when the property is either re-subdivided or is either further developed upon, be part of an agreement recorded against the subdivision. Two, that any proposed building permit should follow the preliminary flood map, which will require percent allowable fill on any development. Three, the applicant is to meet all federal, state, and local requirements. Four, improvements to the site and structures. Four, assigned deed restriction as approved by city attorney, city planner, and city commission be received. Five, a signed conditional use permit agreement is received. Six, a drainage plan is received and approved by the city engineer. Seven, an attorney titled opinion of the city of West Fargo is received. Eight, a signed final plat is received with any necessary easements. And nine, a certificate is received showing taxes are current. This is a public hearing. I'm available to answer any questions. And I believe the applicant is also here tonight, in case you have any questions for him.
Thank you, Malachi. Okay, this is a public hearing, so we'll open the public hearing portion. Any public comments? Any public comments? Last time, any public comments? Okay, hearing none. Commissioners?
Just a quick question, or just a review, 40th Avenue here. There will not be a bridge over the Fargo diversion there, correct?
Correct.
It's at 32nd and 52nd?
Correct.
Yeah, I just, just want to make sure that's on the record. So I guess that, in my mind, helps a little bit. I think this could be, as far as future interest in development in that area, it'll probably be further down the road, just because of access, I would, I would trust. So I'm glad you're covering the extraterritorial subdivision stuff, so we don't have people trying to create subdivisions out there outside of the contiguous city, let's put it that way.
So the staff makes no recommendation on this?
Correct.
And the comprehensive plan says you should not allow development out here until you know the impacts of the diversion?
And that's why I didn't include a staff recommendation necessarily with this particular application was just because I didn't really know how commission felt about it.
Yeah, I could weigh in a little bit, just sort of our, our different posture toward development in the ET. We've had a history of allowing for rezoning to rural estate or rural residential. We didn't have a really good development sort of goal and a plan that said to do otherwise. So when we did the comprehensive plan in 2019, actually Commissioner Thorsted at the time helped us sort of come up with this word of deferred development. It's sort of what a typical egg preserve would be. And we try to limit development outside of the FM diversion by adding that deed restriction. So we mimicked what the county does. A person has a right to develop their property. And so that's why we require that either 40 acres as a lot size or a 40-acre deed restriction. That way we will prevent sprawling development, you know, rural subdivisions like we continue to have a problem with and allow for those 40-acre lots. So we're really just mimicking the development pattern of the county. That's why you're not really seeing any yea or nay here. There's really no opposition or any support of this type of thing. It's essentially letting someone develop a non-farm, single-family dwelling within the agricultural district.
The county doesn't allow them to deed restrict land in the floodplain? That's the way they're interpreting that right now.
Wow. That's, okay.
Do we know what elevation they would be asked to build to?
So right now, the preliminary flood map is out, but it got delayed one more year. But we're using it to determine that base flood elevation, because we determined within our office that within our jurisdiction, it's the best available data. So we're not requiring a flood study. We're having them use that preliminary flood map. And then also, because we're using preliminary flood map, we're requiring any applicant to go through the percent allowable fill determination that was developed by FEMA. So that's something that they're going to have to determine. And it could be substantial. That's on them. And if it is determined that they would create adverse impact, then they would not be able to develop. So it's all, it's, the onus is on the applicant.
The other, I appreciate that the deferral of the dedication of the right-of-way, you know, it's, it's a long way until, you know, that dedication might actually need to occur. However, I've been on the other end of that quite frequently. And it can be very difficult to acquire that right-of-way when you, when you do need it. And so I would encourage at least a, a minimum right-of-way. You know, if you think this is going to be, I mean, if it's currently classified as a future arterial, a minimum dedication consistent with an arterial roadway?
I think you might be misinterpreting that condition, actually, Commissioner Walker.
Yeah, sorry about that. So the right-of-way, so we have 75 feet down for Cass County Highway, which is listed on, on the preliminary site plan right now. The fee in lieu of, or the foregoing of the public land dedication, that's park dedication.
Park dedication. Okay, so the, the roadway dedication will be required with this plat?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
And the diversion is not supposed to affect anybody outside? You're saying it's not going to behave like the West Fargo diversion does and hold water on the outside? You guys promised, right?
That's the, that's the plan, yes. I believe that the, I mean, the floodplain is still out for review, as you noted. But I believe that the floodplain in this area will actually improve. Although it's.
And that's best available data. And that's why we add that condition that they require to meet all federal, state, local requirements for improvements to the site and structures. So whatever happens to the floodplain, that's something they'll have to, right, deal with.
Commissioners?
I think there is a danger of getting out ahead of ourselves with approving this.
We, on previous applications, we had discussions about the roadway connection, the egress. A non-flooded egress, does that apply here as well? And is that available?
We did not receive any comments from the county in that regard, nor from the city engineer. And just trying to recall myself, there is a overflow on 40th Avenue, just the west of the Cheyenne diversion. My recollection, and again, this would be something that we can, we could certainly do some more research on with the county. I believe that they can get to the Raymond Township Road and get north during high flood events. But might be something we should verify before with the county. But the county didn't provide any response on that. So they might not be able to get east, but they can get a little west and north.
Well, and as you noted earlier, the east route is going to be impeded by the metro diversion channel.
Yeah.
There will not be a bridge over the diversion channel at 40th, but there will a mile north and a mile south. And as part of that, the intention is to improve that Raymond Township Road or the north-south Township Road immediately west of this parcel.
I, I, I very much appreciate that and understand that that's the goal. But typically, we don't rely on future improvements. Yeah.
So I did bring up the flood imagery from 2011 on the Cass County GIS website. So this is what the area looked like and sort of where the water was sitting back then. So the area that's being proposed is, I believe, right here. I'll zoom out a little bit.
That's the Maple River water in that 2011 that was over there. We can verify that.
What year was that?
2011 flood imagery.
So if that's some information that we'd like verified bef, is that something we'd like verified before we act?
I'm not inclined to support it either way, so that's just me.
Is that a motion to table?
No, I wasn't suggesting.
Sounds like a motion to deny.
It's, yeah. I mean, it's typically been something that we, we do look at. I just, I'm uncomfortable with this one at this point in time. But that's just my perspective on it. So if, if there are others who would be willing to support it, I'll let you make that motion.
Okay, commissioners? Looking for a motion?
I move to deny.
Okay, we have a motion?
I would second that.
Okay. We have a motion to deny. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Can I call a question?
Say that again?
Can I call a question?
Go ahead.
Basically, I'm just kind of curious when you say deny. In that area, we have that entire quarter, right? Along with that nine-acre subdivision.
Sure.
So you're basically saying that I can't build there? At my 160 acres, I cannot build there? Now, when you say you deny it, why are you denying it? You worried that the flood is going to get me? Is that, is that kind of the determining factor here? Because when you say deny, I don't even know why you're denying it.
I, I think what I heard was there was still some questions about sort of dry access to the site.
Because this is, they should have figured this out. I paid $600 to come here to figure out and may, you know, get a good answer. And all of a sudden, now you're saying you're not going to support it?
I'm sorry.
You know, and we went through lawyers, more engineering, Olmstead. And I'm, I'm, I'm like going, we own that entire quarter. What's going on? Deny, deny what? That I can't build a house there?
So.
I can build it up as high as you want me to.
When I look at the plan that was adopted in the West Fargo 2.0 and the fact that this was not considered ripe for development at the time when we, enough that we labeled it deferred, you know, not, not preferred area for development, when I think about the fact that we're, we don't have an adopted floodplain map that definitively tells us the elevations that we should require you to build to. We don't have a clear indication that you have egress during a flood event that is safe and passable. I, I can't support allowing you to build with those things on the table.
But there, there's a house right, right west.
Yeah.
About 300 feet. And then there's another house about another 400 feet.
Yeah.
And then there's, and then there's buildings in between there.
Those may be houses that were developed as, under the A, where they are, they do have a farm function.
No, they, the other one was, was built just like five years ago.
Like I said, maybe. The, the conditions at the time when they were presented are, were different than the conditions that are in front of us today. Again, in my opinion, those things would need to be addressed before I would feel comfortable supporting adding development at this location.
I do want to offer that the decision can be appealed.
Absolutely.
So we can bring this to city commission. So I assume you want to appeal the decision of the planning commission. This is a recommendation to our city commission. So you'd be given the opportunity to, to bring this to city commission. And planning staff will be happy to help you with that.
I'm going to take it as far as I can, because, I mean, you know, we have that quarter. We, we subdivisioned out that nine acres so we could build. We followed all the rules and regulations. We went through more engineering, Olmstead. You know, we're doing everything that, and, and they're telling us things are looking good. And then we come here and.
Yeah, none of that's a promise. And we'll bring it before the city commission for consideration.
Right.
So just let us know tomorrow that you want to appeal. We'll bring that forward to city commission. That's the best we can do. This is a, a body that provides a recommendation to them. So I encourage you to get in touch with us tomorrow. Don't get too upset about it tonight. We'll take care of this tomorrow.
Okay.
And we'll work with you to file the appeal to the city commission, okay?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Number seven on the agenda, public hearing, A21-43, the zoning ordinance amendment. This is section 4-200, 4-441, and 4-442. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, commissioners. So the proposed amendment adds definitions for temporary pools containing less than 5,000 gallons or with a depth less than two and a half feet, and permanent pools containing more than 5,000 gallons or with a depth greater than two and a half feet. This designation would allow homeowners to continue to own and operate small seasonal pools without the need for barriers, while also clarifying the definition of a permanent pool for purposes of regulation and permitting. The proposed amendment provides that a hard or soft cover for a pool does not constitute inadequate barrier. The proposed amendment clarifies what is considered an acceptable height for locking mechanisms for gates and other openings. And any permanent pool built after January 1st, 2022 would need to be permitted by the West Fargo Building Inspections Department and reviewed by the West Fargo Planning and Zoning Department. Appropriate informational messaging would be done prior to the ordinance going into effect. We sent notices to both the newspaper and city departments. We had multiple comments from building inspections, code enforcement, and emergency management concerning the proposed amendment. We went through and revised this ordinance amendment, I think, five times. Planning staff worked with representatives of all these departments to revise the ordinance to accommodate concerns. The proposed amendments do not make any major substantive changes to the existing ordinances and are consistent with the comprehensive plan. Staff is recommending approval of the proposed amendment. This is a public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Malachi. So this is a public hearing, so we'll open it up for any public comments? Any public comments? Public comments? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, commissioners?
Just a question, Malachi. I read through the information that's provided. You talk of permanent versus a, what was the other one, temporary or seasonal or however you call? Is there, is there parameters as to what permanent really is? Is it a, I, I, obviously, we know in-ground is permanent. That's pretty straightforward. But there's a lot of pools in the town, you see, that are, they're up all year round. You know, they, they're above ground. They got probably fiberglass sides or plastic sides or something like that. But they're, they're more or less permanent, but they're really not permanent, because it could be dismantled, I guess you want to say. Is there a definite, outside of the gallonage and the, the depth of the water or whatever you got, is there something in the ordinances that really give a definitive description or at least a better description as to what you would. or at least a better description as to what you interpret permanent to be?
Not within our ordinance. So, some other municipalities that we've looked at, sometimes they define a temporary pool as something that's up, you know, less than six months or something of that nature. Some municipalities go off a gallon size or depth. For our purposes, prior to this, we didn't have a definition for a temporary or permanent pool. The reason that we're bringing this ordinance amendment to begin with is we would like to do permitting for pools. It was brought to our attention that we haven't really done permitting in the past couple of years and that we should start doing it once again. But from a code enforcement side of things, it's hard to, it's hard to permit something, for instance, like a kiddie pool or like, because our ordinance, prior to this ordinance amendment, doesn't really have a good definition. So, like, for instance, when does somebody have to build a fence or a barrier to keep children out of the pool? Is it when it's above ground? Is it when it's in-ground? How big does the pool have to be? So, that was kind of what this attempt for the ordinance amendment was making.
Yeah, and I understand that. I just wonder if there's going to be some confusion out there if you don't have at least some guidelines as to what you consider a permanent versus not, you know, when it comes to inspection or otherwise. That's the only question I have. I under, the permitting and all that seems to make sense.
Yep, two and a half, yep, two and a half feet.
We're finally creating a definition, essentially.
So, there are residents, there's quite a few of them in town, they have above, they're above ground, and they, like I said, they're not a concrete or anything like that, but, you know, they probably bought them wherever they bought them and put them up themselves. They leave them up all the time. Those are considered permanent. So, are they going to have to then comply with the regulations of a permanent one? Are they going to be grandfathered in? I mean, how are you going to handle, I guess, because at least the ones I see in town, sure, there's a few in-ground ones, but there's a lot of above-ground ones.
Tim might be better off answering this, but I would assume we would treat it as a legal, non-conforming type.
If they prove that they existed prior to it.
I don't want to create a lot of angst with the citizens either. I mean, and obviously, they have their own liability concerns they've got to address themselves as far as someone getting injured in them, but I just want to make sure we're not creating a situation where we're going to create a lot of angst with some people that have pools.
Well, that's kind of the purpose behind doing this, though, because some of them don't have anything that's protecting anybody from just hopping in there, but if it's high enough, right, Malachi, they may not need that. They just have to have that ladder that can be lifted up.
Correct.
You know, I think the way we designed it, we worked with health and building inspections and tried to make it so that we're not going to create a nightmare for ourselves, but we also, right now, have a hard time. I think the biggest problem we have is pools now are fifty to a hundred grand if you're doing an in-ground one, and we had some people that installed one, and they were concerned that what happens if I get this wrong? You know, and so, the setbacks and all that kind of stuff. So, that's why we're like, okay, we've got to have a permit. Well, now, if we're going to have a permit, well, we realized that our current pool standards were really kind of arbitrary and obscure, like, so that's why we created definitions and made more clear definitions in there.
No, I think you're going in the right direction.
I hope so.
You know, getting permitted is a good way to go.
Yeah, and of course.
I just want, I don't want to create a whole bunch of, like I say, people out there that have stuff already, and they're concerned about whether they're in compliance or not, or they're going to, they're going to have the pool police coming by, or, you know, whatever the case may be, is I'm sure most owners want to comply and want to have a safe pool area. I don't think that's a, you know, probably, you're going to get a lot of pushback that way, but just as long as you have the definitions down as to what is a permanent and what's a temporary one.
Yeah, and great points, and that's the beauty of local government, that we can put you guys through this arduous task of reviewing our ordinances when we mess them up and come back and fix it. But I think, I think we did our due diligence to try to get this thing right. If we do have some concerns, and we'll pay attention to that, if our code officer's out there making people's lives miserable, we tend to, you know, if people are, you know, going over the speed limit sometimes, we look at, do we need to raise the speed limit? Or do we need to put in some improvements to get people to slow down? That's the kind of mentality we try to have on that, so appreciate the comments.
Don't you require fencing around the pool?
Uh, so, well.
We're clarifying that in this, yeah.
So, the ordinance only makes reference to a barrier that is at least six feet tall, so it doesn't really have a really good definition for barrier. So, in place of a fence, there's been times where somebody has called us up and been like, hey, what if I put a hard cover on our pool? Does that count as a barrier then? Because, you know, if it's locked or something like that, a kid can't get in. And then there's been other people who have like those electronic pool opening things where you hit a button and then it retracts, and they're like, does that count? Yes or no? And so, this was sort of, again, our attempt at kind of clarifying what was needed.
So, you want a motion to recommend approval?
Yes.
Are we out of the public hearing?
We are.
So, say.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Motion carries. Item number eight is withdrawn. Item number nine, non-agenda. Any non-agenda items? None? Motion to adjourn? We're adjourned.
I'm sorry. I did have a question. Did the sign ordinance that, or the sign requests that we had last month, how did that go at commission? Or has it been to commission? Denial?
Yeah, tossing really fast.
Thank you. Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't even think they discussed it, just wanted. That was, yeah, off, yeah, right. We finally said, do something else, it's getting kicked off.
They denied it because of a cop line?
No, that's.
Because that wasn't what happened with the West Fargo.
Yeah, the window of the north, right behind the fire department. He owns that. What he wanted to do, here's the, here's his, the Northern Lights, it's called, and then he owns this lot here next to the fire department? And he wanted to put a sign right here.